I'd like to call the Monday, March 4, 2024 Oakwood City Council Meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me with the pledge of the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please, Lori?
Mayor Duncan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mrs. Turbin?
Here.
Mrs. Jackson?
Here.
And may I have a report on the minutes of our February 5th regular session, work session, and executive session, and our February 26th work session and executive session? Councilmember Jackson?
Yes, Mayor, I've read the minutes. Upon review, I found them to be complete and correct, and I move that we accept the minutes as written.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, that will be so ordered. We have, under Status Reports, we have one citizen committee appointment. We had one vacancy on our Board of Zoning Appeals, and Paul Cavanaugh has agreed to serve, to fill that unexpired term, and I would make a motion that we appoint Paul Cavanaugh to our Board of Zoning Appeals. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then, I also have a proclamation, and the proclamation is to recognize April 7 through April 13, 2024, as National Library Week. Whereas today's libraries are not just about books, but what they do for and with people, and whereas libraries of all types are at the heart of cities, villages, schools, and campuses, and whereas libraries and librarians empower their communities to make informed decisions by providing free access to information, and whereas libraries and librarians build strong communities through transformative services, programs, and expertise, whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions where people of all backgrounds can be together and connect, and whereas libraries, which promote the free exchange of information and ideas for all, are cornerstones of democracy, and whereas libraries promote civic engagement by keeping people informed and aware of community events and issues, and whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers partner with other civic organizations to make sure their community's needs are being met, and whereas libraries are a resource for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or social economic status, by offering services and educational resources that transform lives and strengthen communities. Whereas librarians, libraries, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week, now therefore, under the power vested in me, I, William D. Duncan, Mayor of the City of Oakwood, hereby proclaim April 7 through April 13, 2024, as National Library Week, and encourage all residents to visit Wright Memorial Public Library this week and explore what's new at your library and engage with your librarian. We do have some special guests here in our audience. We have Kelly Kling, who is the Community Engagement Specialist at Wright Memorial Public Library. Kelly, where are you? Welcome. We have our youth coordinator, Nader, Michelle Shane, there's Michelle in the front, and we have Library Board President Randy Honaker, welcome. And then we have a number of youth and library ambassadors, and probably their parents. So we welcome to all of you. I want to come down and get the proclamation, and then, I don't know who, if anyone from the library would like to come up and say a few words to council and our citizens watching tonight, is that okay? I'll be right there.
(laughing) I guess things could be better. Okay, wonderful. Sure. Great. No.
Just pull the, yeah, yeah. We have to stick together.
I'll try to stand back, too. On behalf of Wright Library, and behalf of our library ambassadors, this is a really wonderful honor that the City of Oakwood recognizes all that Wright Library does for our community, and what National Library Week means, not only here in our small community, but across the nation. Like the proclamation says, this is an opportunity for the library to showcase just all of the variety of offerings that we have, it's not just books, there's so much more. And our library ambassadors are part of that family of librarians, and they act in conjunction with what we're doing, not only inside the library, but outside of the library. And it means a lot that we have all of our young people here today. So thank you very much, thank you for this proclamation. And, on behalf of Wright Library, we do have some solar eclipse glasses for all of our council members, so that you can be prepared on April 8.
Thank you. I was wondering where I was going to get one. I'm almost, I'm almost thinking when it's time for legislation, we should all put these on at the same time when we pass our legislation.[437.12][437.12](laughing) I don't know, you guys want to do that? Sure. Well, is there some assembly required, required here? No? Okay, good. Just fold? Oh, okay.
Oh, it's like 3D movies.
Yeah. You can't see through them?
No.
Well, that's even better.[463.03][463.03](laughing) There is one thing, one of the things we do that's somewhat unique for our city is we have a new resident breakfast every year, and it's coming up, I hear, about week, 10 days, and, and the Wright Library will be there, and, and we really like to tell our people, because they come, we have people that come from Europe, some of them are military transfers, we come from all 50 states, more east, more east of the Mississippi than west, but we've had those before as well, and so they're always very impressed with how the library, how the library affects our view.
They look good, Bill.
Do they?
Yeah.
All right, you can't see a thing? Okay.
We're going to make a better.
You're right, I can't see anything.
Where's the?
Now, how's this work? I'm supposed to look at the sun, but the sun's blotted out on the solar eclipse.
Yeah, which way are we looking?[518.12][518.12](laughing)
Look to the voice.
Yeah, I'm going to look towards the voice.
I'm cheating, I'm cheating.
Tell us when.[525.66][525.66](laughing)
Okay.
Solar eclipse?
Solar eclipse.
Geez. All right. Wow, these are dark.
Yeah.
Can't see a thing.
Hey, how do I look? Should that go in the register or not?
That's right.
Do I look all right, big guy? Yeah? All right, yeah. All right, fantastic, yeah.
You'll get, you'll get this, you'll get this on Wright Library's website tonight, correct? Probably tomorrow.
Thank you for the glasses. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This is great. This might help my golf swing, too.
Can't hurt it.
That's true. Okay. All right, do we have, that's the end of our Status Report section, do we have any visitors that wish to address council on this issue or any, any, any other issue? This will be your time to come up to the podium and state your name and address the record and what your issue is, and we would welcome you. Everybody's here for the library, how about that? Okay. All right, well, thank you. We will then go to legislation, I believe, and once I find my agenda, here we go. This is going to be the council member Stevens show for the rest of the evening. He has one, two, three resolutions and two ordinances, so we'll let you guys listen to those, and I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Duncan. This is a resolution declaring the necessity of improving certain streets between certain termini in the City of Oakwood, Ohio, by lighting the same with electricity. This is an annual resolution that is the first step of our 2025 street lighting program. We are required by law to pass several pieces of legislation to provide street lighting each year. The first is the resolution declaring the necessity of street lighting throughout the city. I will also be introducing the second piece, the quote, "ordinance to proceed," for the project, but this will be its first reading, will not vote on that ordinance until our April meeting. The third piece of legislation, an ordinance to levy assessments for certain street light costs, will be introduced as a first reading at our April meeting, followed by a final assessment ordinance to be introduced after the project has concluded. I move that council adopt this resolution.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions for Councilmember Stevens? Hearing done. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
An ordinance determining to proceed with the improvement of certain streets between certain termini in the City of Oakwood, Ohio, by lighting the same with electricity. This is an annual ordinance that is the second step of our 2025 street lighting program. It is the ordinance that authorizes the city to proceed with the project. This is the first reading of this ordinance, so I make no motion at this time. This is a resolution declaring the necessity of repairing sidewalks and appurtenances thereto on Far Hills Avenue and certain other streets between certain termini in the City of Oakwood, Ohio, and providing that the abutting property owners repair the same. This is an annual resolution that is the first step of our 2024 sidewalk curb and driveway apron project. This year's program area covers Far Hills Avenue through our main business district, from Peach Orchard Road to the South Corporate Limit. It will also include the first block of most of the side streets that intersect with Far Hills Avenue through the business district. We are required by law to pass three pieces of legislation in order to carry out this program and assess the sidewalk costs. The first piece is this resolution, which declares the necessity of sidewalk repairs in these parts of the city. I will also be introducing the second piece, the quote, "ordinance to proceed," for the project. After this project concludes, there will be a third piece of legislation, an ordinance to levy assessments for certain sidewalk costs. I move that council adopt this resolution.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions for Councilmember Stevens? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
An ordinance determining to proceed with the repairing of sidewalks and appurtenances thereto on certain streets between certain termini in the City of Oakwood, Ohio, and providing that abutting property owners repair the same. This is an annual ordinance that is the second step of our 2024 sidewalk curb and driveway apron project. Again, this year's program area covers Far Hills Avenue through the main business district, from Peach Orchard Road to the South Corporate Limit, as well as the first block of most of the side streets that intersect with Far Hills Avenue through the business district. This is the first reading of this ordinance, so I make no motion at this time. And, a final resolution. This is a resolution approving the countywide 911 services final plan as approved by the Countywide 911 Program Review Committee. Each county in Ohio is required to develop and implement a plan for the operation of coordinated 911 services throughout the county. The plan is subject to periodic review and updating, as well as a statutory approval process. That process begins with the six-member countywide 911 Program Review Committee. Any updates must be further approved by the Board of County Commissioners, as well as municipalities and townships making up at least 60% of the county's population. The 911 Program Review Committee recently approved an updated final plan for the operation of 911 services in Montgomery County. They have sent it to all the Montgomery County municipalities and townships, as well as the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, for review and approval. Once approved, it will be filed with the Ohio 911 Program Office. The resolution I am introducing will formalize Oakwood's approval of the plan, allowing it to be submitted to the Ohio 911 Program Office in time to meet an April filing deadline. I move that council adopt this resolution.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions for Councilmember Stevens? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes our legislation tonight, and thank you, Councilmember Stevens, for making that so succinct. Very good. The next item on our agenda is our staff report, and we have our city engineer, Chris Kuzma, and we've got some really cool photos of a lot of things that are going on in Oakwood. And before he takes the stage, we have one question for the library ambassadors. The word of the day is appurtenances, so go home tonight and look up the word appurtenances. Welcome, city engineer.
Thank you very much, Mayor. All right, so the bad news is, as has been pointed out to me, my slideshow is 54 slides long.
Fifty-four, we heard forty-eight.[947.44][947.44](laughing)
However, however, nine of them are like this, a title sheet for every project, and about 35 of them are images or pictures, so we'll try to, try to motor through them here really quickly. Maybe. It would help if I turned it on. Okay, there we go. We have pretty busy here in the Public Works and Engineering Department this year, especially this time of year. This is a list of upcoming projects here, we have several more than what I've listed, but these are my main focus here in the next few months, highlighted by the ongoing Far Hills Storm Sewer Project, as everyone is aware, if you've driven up and down 48 lately. The Sidewalk Curb and Apron Program, which we just passed, or read, resolution and, and legislation for that. And the ODOT Urban Paving Program, which is repaving Far Hills by ODOT. The first, the Far Hills Storm Sewer Project, this is going to be half of my presentation, as it's one of the largest projects we've done in several years. Here's an overview of the financials. As of Friday, the 1st of March, the original contract was $1.84 million, our budget was $2.1 million, that includes the ARP of homes, and we, work completed to date is $1.03 million, and adding to that, $31,500 worth of change orders, we have a remaining budget of $1.04 million, give or take, so we're looking good there. Here's a map of the original design of the project, and no need to study it or anything. I'm going to show you the next slide, which is field changes we made, kind of, I'm going to say on the fly, I mean, obviously, there's a lot more thought that goes into changing a major storm sewer project. So you can see, just in the first phase and a half, we have, the blue lines up there represent field changes that we made. That means no real design, that means just, let's get the pipe in the ground and make it work, and make sure that we still alleviate the flooding and fix all the issues that we're, we're striving to fix. So that brings us to the current overall map of the project. And this fourth map is going to be completed as of March 1st, again, so the green is completed. So as you can see, we're, we're down to the very last, probably 33% of the entire project. Now, part of that is crossing 48. That's, that's a major undertaking with traffic going both ways to and from Dayton, and just the complexity of all the utilities within the right of way. So we're, we're working on that right now, and things are moving, changing, and evolving every single day. So that's kind of a status report right there on that project. So some, some photos from the, the project, this is back in August, this is a view of the 1313 Far Hills property, right after the, the residential home was, was razed. You can see the basement walls there on the right side. This is over on Dellwood, between 7 and 9 Dellwood. We had to trench and place 12-inch pipe between these two houses, and that was a big undertaking because the clearance there, the horizontal clearance is about 12 feet. So to get a big track hoe or excavator between the houses without doing any damage or anything like that, that's a big deal. Here's a, an image from, right after they, they trenched, and the pipe is already in the ground and backfilled, you can see minimal, minimal damage, or minimal excavation, if you will, was done. And here on the next slide, you'll see, this is just this morning, actually, it looks like they weren't even there. Pipe is in the ground, flooding in the school parking lot behind these properties is all but alleviated, to my knowledge. This is standing at the southeast corner of Dellwood and Far Hills, looking east along Dellwood. This is after the, the pipe was placed along Dellwood on the left side of the screen, you can see running along the curb, and the right side, that's, they have just removed the curb to be replaced. Here is kind of in the middle of restoring Dellwood, and afterwards, you can see, it looks like a brand-new street. Looks like they weren't even there. So Kennison Excavating, our contractor, is doing a great job, as far as I'm concerned. I'm very happy with them, and despite the lengthy delays and such with the schedule, they've done a very good job, day-to-day and overall. This is an example of a manhole, this is one of the, I referenced change orders on the financials slide. Being such an old city, we run into things pretty much every time they stick, stick a shovel in the ground, stuff that we, we don't see coming when we're in the design phase. So this is an example of an old manhole. It was supposed to remain as part of the project, unfortunately, as you can see, it's old, the bottom is all but gravel, and it needed to be replaced, so tack that on to a, a change order, which is above and beyond the scope of the project. This is on Far Hills, a little bit south of Dellwood, just an example of, of what they're doing day-to-day as they lay the pipe, they're excavating down, I'd say probably about seven to eight feet, and you can see the, the pipe at the, at the bottom of the trench there. So just, it lets you appreciate the amount of work and, and care that they give, allowing traffic to still buzz by them all day, every day. And this is an after photo, a little bit further south, but still looking towards Dellwood, fully restored and about to be opened up for traffic. This is standing at the rear of the 1313 Far Hills property, looking west towards Deveraux. We had to place a 42-inch pipe along the driveway, that's kind of hard to see because of the vegetation right there to the left of the brown structure, that is a single-family home, so again, very big deal, 42-inch pipe excavating upwards of 13 feet deep, so a very big undertaking, and here's a, kind of middle of the, of the process of getting the pipe in that area with a, a large manhole right there. This is right after they went through that driveway, heading towards us, from the perspective of the picture. The next, this, this is an image on Deveraux, another example of stuff that you just, you never know what you're going to, what you're going to find when you excavate and, and go under, go into a project of this magnitude. Again, our infrastructure is very old, we have an idea of where pipes and utilities and electric lines, et cetera, are underground, but until you, you actually get the shovel in the ground, we really don't know where exactly they are. This is a sewer main right there that I've circled, the furthest top-left red circle. Unfortunately, the sewer main kind of snaked and weaved along the roadway. Typically, you find sewer like that is in a straight line, unfortunately, due to joints in the pipe settling and shifting underground, it did kind of a zigzag across the road, it was three feet further west than we thought, excavator hit it, so again, I, I spoke of the, the lengthy delays, this is just one example of many, where they were getting ready to, to place some pipe there, and we hit an, an active sewer main, so work is halted, we have to repair that, to make sure that all of the homes along Deveraux are served, and they're able to, the residents are able to flush their toilets, run their sinks, take showers, et cetera, et cetera. This is an after photo of their repairs in that area. This is a little further north along Deveraux, you can see that brown house at the top of the screen, that is the driveway that we went through with the pipe, so this just, again, shows the magnitude of the excavation, this is a full-width excavation, so afterwards, when we go to restore Deveraux Drive, it will be a full roadway replacement with asphalt. This is a, looking east along the driveway, and just showing, again, the complexity of the project, and it, this, this property has been further restored, it's been backfilled with stone and compacted, so the residents are able to access their driveway if they so choose. The contractor will be back to pave with asphalt once asphalt plants open in April. And finally, I believe this is my last image for the project, this is on Far Hills in the median, just the other day, I think it was Thursday or Friday of last week, again, never know what you're going to run into when you stick the shovel in the ground. The blue circle is a new pipe that is crossing Far Hills on the northbound side. I am standing, I took the, the photo, I am standing in the median, looking kind of southeast. So, at this, at this point, the contractor was excavating through the median, trying to figure out if our, what's called the invert, the bottom of the pipe elevation was going to work as we cross Far Hills, ran into the three red circles, three pipes that we had no idea, no record of, no idea they were there, so it's kind of telling, in, in one photo, you can see three things that we had, we had no idea we were going to run into. So, again, halt the project for a few, I get out to site, we have our sewer crews bring a camera out there, we take a camera up each and every pipe, trying to figure out where they go, whether they're still in service or not, and if there are any connections to it. So luckily, in this case, none of them were active, we were able to then, the contractor was able to then fill them up, and make sure that next time we have to replace a pipe or whatever, the, the engineer and future contractors don't run into them and have to do the same as we did, investigations as we did. The remaining schedule for, for the project, we expect that there will be a shift in traffic along Far Hills, so they can cross the southbound side as early as next week, so March 11th. More details are forthcoming on the website and on our email list. We anticipate that they will be out of Far Hills completely by April 1. That's the earliest date that asphalt plants are open, so it, I suppose it's feasible that the ODOT repaving project could begin as early as then, I don't anticipate that, I anticipate that the, the repaving of Far Hills will be later this summer, I'll get to that later. We expect a complete replacement of the storm sewer by mid-April, pending the weather, of course, and a final restoration to begin mid to late April, again, with the asphalt plants opening up. Next project is the Sidewalk Curb and Apron, affectionately known as the SCA project. This is a map, as we learned earlier, we are focusing on the cruise lanes of the business This year, we had four bidders, which is great, the past couple of years, we've only had two, maybe three, one year we didn't have any, so we're, we're happy to see that there's, there's new blood, so to speak, getting in on all of our projects, really. The low bid was $316,000, the high bid was $575,000, my engineer's estimate was right in the middle, so obviously, we're very happy with our bids, and the, the healthy competition. The project was awarded to A to Z Property Maintenance, and I plan to meet with them here in the next couple of weeks to hopefully get the project kicked off. ODOT Urban Paving Program, or the Far Hills Repaving Project, Far Hills was last repaved in 2011, it is an 80/20 cost split, 20% local funds. The pre-bid estimate by ODOT was $1.59 million, and the awarded contract was a little bit higher than that at 1.6, so the local cost is around $320,000. We anticipate that the project will start, hopefully, after, after school's out, late spring, early summer timeframe. Concrete Street Repair Program, the two, the two roadways that have been identified for this project are Raleigh and Grandin, we have a budget of about $100,000, give or take, depending on what is left over from the SCA program. I expect that our scope will fit into that budget, and we anticipate beginning that project in the summer or early fall. Now, as part of that project, we have a number of concrete streets here in, in Oakwood. This is on Grandin at Ridgeway, the circled areas there are cracks in the, in the concrete roadway. for this project are Raleigh and Grandin. We have a budget of about $100,000, give or take, depending on what is left over from the SCA program. I expect that our scope will fit into that budget, and we anticipate beginning that project in the summer or early fall. Now, as part of that project, we have a number of concrete streets here in Oakwood. This is on Grandin at Ridgeway. The circled areas there are cracks in the, in the concrete roadway at the joints that have been filled with, with asphalt over, over the years, just as a temporary patch. And we, we anticipate cutting those out with a two-foot-wide saw cut and backfilling with, with gravel, and then replacing the concrete to enhance the structural integrity of the roadway. This is another example along Raleigh. Again, you can see the asphalt patches there, and then entire panels are starting to crumble a little bit. So obviously, the entire panel will be played, be replaced. Again, on Raleigh, looking up the hill, you can see asphalt patches, same deal there. This is last year's Concrete Streets Program. You can see, this is on Garden. You can see the, the little two-foot strips there along the middle of the roadway, and then the bright white panel on the right side. That was all done as part of this program. And looking the other way along Garden toward, towards Patterson, again, you see the lighter concrete there. So that's, that's what we're aiming to do, to make, make Raleigh and Grandin, again, have better structural integrity and then offer better drivability, a smoother Public Works Yard Improvements. We are aiming to replace the salt dome with a polyfabric span structure. I'll get to that here in a little bit. We're also expanding the volume of storage for our salt. We are adding storage for the smoke state, smoke safety trailer that Public Safety uses for education. Hazmat disposal storage in tandem with the Rotary Club. And we have a lot of materials and just our stockyard kind of, I'll call it disorganized at the moment. So we're looking to improve that. Our budget's $300,000, and we expect to begin here in the summer. This is our current salt dome. It is a circular salt barn with a poured concrete wall and a shingled roof. If anyone owns a house and has had to replace a shingled roof, you know that that can become costly. Ours is darn near due for a replacement here in the next five years, the roof itself. So we looked at alternatives for, for just the, replacing the roof here. This is a side view. You can see a couple of shingles there, misplaced. And then the, the storage area, if you can call it that, just in, in the foreground of the, of the picture. We're looking to improve the organization and accessibility to all the, the materials used there. And this is a close-up of the entrance to the salt dome. You can see the wood inside starting to rot a little bit, and could use some tender love and care. This is what we're proposing for the salt dome. It's a polyfabric span structure. It's got stainless steel spans and fabric on top, of course. We are going to do a poured wall and hopefully have some lean-tos, lean-to structures on the right or left side, depending on the orientation. I will say, this project, we know, we know of all the puzzle pieces, what with the, the storage area and the salt dome and the lean-tos and, and what have you. We're at the process now of kind of configuring, configuring those puzzle pieces to make it fit optimally. So that's where we're at right now. Fiber to Smith Gardens. We are looking to expand the city's fiber network. We're bringing fiber from this building here at 30 Park Avenue to Smith Gardens to service security cameras. So our estimate's $90,000. We are looking at directional bore, which is minimally invasive. So they'll be, the contractor we select for the project will be digging little, little five-by-five pits in the ground, taking a drill and drilling, literally horizontally under the ground, and popping up another 200, 300 feet down the road, where they'll have another five-by-five pit. They'll move their drill over and do it all over again until we get to Smith Gardens. So I expect it'll be very quick, hopefully mostly painless and minimally invasive. Like I said, we are currently soliciting quotes and coming up with the best route, considering all of our utilities underground. We expect that to be complete before summer. NGIS Utilities Mapping. It's an ongoing project. As I've spoken to you before, it's kind of an everlasting project. It's never gonna be finished, but we can only be as good as our, our latest information and data. We're compiling data for all of our utilities, being water, storm, and sanitary sewer, as well as streetlights, roads, roadway striping, ADA ramps, signage, et cetera. We're also training some of our public works staff to utilize GIS and also assist in collecting the data. So that's an ongoing process. The sewer crews, as they go in and clean our sewers, they're also taking our GPS out and taking points. So our, we know our, our maps are up-to-date and accurate and field-verified. I would say, as of this moment, we have about 50% of our sanitary sewer mapped and field-verified. That means pulling manhole lids and verifying that the pipes are in fact going in the right direction, and they are in fact sanitary sewer. Same with storm sewer, about 40% complete, and water is about 90% mapped, and we're improving that daily as we excavate. Here's a map of the sanitary sewer map, or GIS, and the, it's kind of hard to tell, but the dark red slash brown dots and lines are the sanitary sewer lines and manholes or structures. So you can see, we're about 50%, and all of that is field-verified. We know for a fact that, that, those locations are complete and correct. Again, a map of our storm sewer, same deal there, field-verified. We know exactly where the water is flowing once it makes it, once, once water is into our storm sewer system and eventually outletting at the corporation lines. And here's our water map. As you can see, a lot more complete, although we are verifying as we go, as we have main breaks, service requests, oops, calls, et cetera. So that's, that's an ongoing process. And with that, to assist in GIS and our, all of our projects that are going on, we are looking for a summer engineering co-op slash intern. We are currently advertising for that position, and I am looking forward to hopefully hiring someone to help and for us to help in their career. So very excited for that. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for our engineer?
Well, of course. They're, they're, they're not bad, Chris.
Okay.
All right. So let's start with the salt dome. Would we be, I didn't understand, were you gonna get rid of that and replace it with the new one or add to it?
That's correct. We're, we are removing it and replacing it.
So probably the existing concrete walls are circular. So we'd have to tear all that down.
That's correct.
Even if we don't put it right there, we're still gonna tear that down, clean up that whole area, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I got you.
Yes, sir.
The traffic shift at four?
Yes.
I assume that's what you meant by the traffic shift, right?
Yes, sir.
At four, where they took out the curbs?
Mm-hmm.
The length of that being closed down, do you have any idea? Approximate, everything's an approximate.
Yeah, it depends, again, on weather and, and what have you, and what else we run into underground. But I anticipate that they're gonna make pretty quick progress. They're, all they have to do is cross one side. Originally, we thought we were gonna have to shift traffic over to one side entirely and then switch it all to the other. Luckily, we only have to do one of those shifts. So I-
Oh, is that right? Okay.
Yes, sir. And so having the entire side of the road closed, they'll be able to make quicker progress than they have within Far Hills thus far. So I expect them, weather pending, to be about two weeks, give or take.
Okay. So traffic will shift to the-
Northbound side.
Northbound side, which is on the-
Right side, heading towards Dayton.
East side.
Yes.
Yes, the east side. So it's all gonna be on the east side. So it'll ship, you're coming down, I'm trying to think here how that's gonna work. Okay. All right, I see how that works. I assume we're gonna put up multiple signs?
Oh, yes. Yeah.
Excessive amount.
Working with the contractor right now to, to figure out a traffic plan for all the, not only Far Hills, but the side streets.
Side streets and then, because they're gonna have to swing back around. It's all gonna be coned. It'll be coned off where you can, slowing down, obviously.
Absolutely. And right turns only, if not closed entirely.
No turns at all?
Yeah.
Yeah, same thing.
So we'll, we'll see. We're working through that currently.
Okay. And then last question. Do you know what the length, and maybe Norv knows, because you weren't here in 2011, the length of the Far Hills repaving project, what does that usually last?
That's a good question.
If, as long as there's no other issues, we just-
Right.
Three weeks.
Oh, is it only three weeks?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't know what it would take.
Yeah, they, they, I mean, there are two primary repaving, big companies that, that do that type of work, Jurgensen and Barrett. And Barrett got the contract this time, and they've done it before. And yeah, they, they come out with a big crew and-
Okay.
And go right to it.
So, yeah, 'cause both sides, you know, four lanes. Okay, okay. So about three weeks. Once that starts.
I'll add that, you know, a good portion of the overhead RTA trolley system is already down, and that will speed up the project as the trucks, when they, when they're, have the bed up in the air to dump the asphalt into the paving machine. You know, they won't have to worry about those.
Oh, they used to have to lower to get around them?
Power lines, yes. Absolutely.
That would make sense. Okay, okay, good. Great. Thank you, Chris.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I just had one. The, the GIS system, my, my understanding is, and you correct me if I'm wrong, is to the extent that we had records on everything that was underground, they were all just manual records, if any.
Yeah.
So I mean, this is a major project to help assist us going forward and identifying, well, what do we have underground, and when's it gonna break, and when are we gonna have to fix it? So as you can see, just this little tiny 2.2 square miles, you had a heck of a lot of dots on that map. So, okay, but we appreciate you.
And more and more every day.
Yes. Okay. Well, thank you very much for your report.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Chris.
So it's now time for our city manager's report.
Well, as, as Chris was talking, I was reflecting on, you know, arriving here in the early 1990s and, you know, being engaged in projects like this. And so for the 30-some years I've been here, every year, we are doing these sorts of projects. I mean, they, they vary obviously from year to year, but we're, we're engaged in something. And I, I once thought that at some point, we're gonna catch up or get ahead, and we'll have a slow period. But that's, that's crazy talk, and that never seems to happen. And I guess if you think in terms of your own residential property, all the stuff that happens in just one small little, single-family property, and then you multiply that by a community of 2.2 square miles with all that we have here and nearly 10,000 people living, it, it takes this sort of an effort, year after year after year, to keep it going. Now, I went to a conference, as you know, last, latter part of last week, and one of the, the keynote speakers was the former city manager of San Antonio, Texas. And as I was listening to her speak about San Antonio and being the city manager of that city, and then reflecting on Oakwood, what a different world we live in. I forget how many total employees they have in San Antonio, but it's an enormous city. And in fact, she referred to it as a, a city of cities. So, but regardless of the size of a community, there is just an endless amount of, of work required to maintain the public infrastructure. So thanks, Chris, for, for all that you do. The only other comment I have tonight is, we're working on the next Oakwood Scene Newsletter, and I don't know how many folks read it from front to back. I'd like to think that more do than probably do, but I, I would encourage everyone to read it. It's, it's full of good information. Some of it is a little bit repetitive, but if you, you only read half of the editions, you're gonna run into good information. The, the one that we're working on now, April-May edition, has information about our, our leaf mulch program, which is coming up, about our recycling, the, the rotary hazard, hazardous waste pickup, which will happen again in April. There's important information about income tax filing, Carol Collins' favorite event, the perennial sale, which is about in the middle of, of April, and a number of other things, the styrofoam recycling, and you name it. So a great resource for our community. And again, that gets mailed to every, every household. That's all I have.
All right. Any questions for our city manager? All right. It's now time for council comments, and Councilmember Jackson.
The organization Welcome Dayton wants to expand its reach beyond city boundaries into all areas of Montgomery County. And to that end, they're sponsoring a series of listening sessions that bring immigrants and local, local people together to mingle and connect. I attended a meeting in February 15th at the Dayton Library in Miami'sburg. Ten refugees shared their stories with representatives from different social service agencies and public officials, and I was glad to be there, so Oakwood was represented. Welcome Dayton will sponsor an International Women's Day celebration on March 9th at the downtown library. Activities will include art, music, dance, and a wellness fair. Its purpose is to encourage women to connect and share with women from other cultures. So I want to encourage Oakwood women of all ages to attend. I found immersing myself in the world of others to be very enriching. I also want to encourage Oakwood citizens who know families living in our community, who have family members living in war zone areas, to reach out to them and to express your concern for their loved ones. Just give them some assurance that you're aware of the turmoil that's going on and is very real to them. These small gestures of kindness can be meaningful, and sometimes we don't realize how appreciated they are.
Thank you. Councilmember Turbin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I was gonna share with you my solar eclipse story, but first, I wanted to remind everyone that April 8th is going to be the total solar eclipse, as I'm sure many of you know, and that Catherine Wright Park at the library welcomes you. And I guess the big event happens at 2:45 to 3:45? Okay, so mark that down. And now my story. In 2017, my husband and I were driving through Tennessee, and it happened to be the day of the last total solar eclipse. We had got our, our sunglasses, and so we knew we were gonna pull over sometime, you know, so we could, we could view the eclipse. And so we finally found a, a very remote field, and there were about seven cars sitting in the field. And so we just parked there, and before you knew it, there were probably 100 cars in that field, and we were all waiting for the big moment. And it was a really interesting atmosphere. It was very social. It was kind of like a tailgating party, you know, everyone had brought their lawn chairs and their refreshments, and everybody was, you know, meeting and greeting. And one of the first questions you would ask someone is, well, where are you from? Because they were from all over. And so we met a, a couple up there, and my first question was, well, where are you from? And the woman said, well, we're from Oakwood, Ohio. And I said, we're from Oakwood, Ohio. And so here in some city in Tennessee and some remote field, I got to meet Linda and Michael O'Brien. And so I just wanted to reach out to them and say, we hope we meet you again this year, but this time at, right at the Catherine Wright Park. So, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Stevens, can you top that one?
No, mine's just a, a thank you to, I know the O'Briens. You want me to call them for you and tell them where to be?
No, I know them now.
I could tell you where they are. I just wanna thank all the Oakwood citizens and other residents in other communities that drive through Oakwood on a res, a regular basis for their patience with our Far Hills construction project. Because obviously, it has gone longer than we had hoped. And as Chris mentioned, there's been a lot of obstacles, things we didn't, we weren't aware of. And I know it's not fun. It's, it's, we, we did the curbs along there, too, in preparation of the repaving project that happens once every, let's call, let's call it 13 years now. There's been a lot of construction on Far Hills. The main construction with the pipe that he was referring to, this is a once-in-a-lifetime project. This is one pipe that was underneath one home in Oakwood that, there's no other home in Oakwood that has a large pipe underneath it. And this had to be fixed. It had problems, and it's why the house was torn down and why we had to fix the pipe. And it's a large undertaking, and, you know, it's one of those things where it's never gonna happen again. So I just ask you to be a little bit more patient for the next, we're calling it two months, to get this done. And then we should be good to go to repave Far Hills, and it'll be a nice, smooth road when it's done. So I just wanna thank everyone for their patience so far and their understanding. And sorry it's taken longer than we thought, but, you know, it is a weather-related, once you get, once you get past the, I think the first deadline was maybe November or December, and, you know, once we get past there, it's a weather-related thing. And then it was a, there was some product I know we couldn't get, as far as some of the piping. So I, I don't wanna make it sound like excuses. Those are just facts. And it's the way it is. So once again, thank you for your understanding and your patience, and hopefully we can get it done in the next couple of months, and we'll get Far Hills back to a nice, full, thorough fair. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor Byington?
I'll just say, I want a, a special thanks to the library for coming to our meeting this evening, for sitting patiently through some boring legislation. I know how difficult it is. At that age, it's difficult at this age, too. But I appreciate the glasses as well. I think it's gonna be a fun event. I know that it'll be fun to just see all the people looking up with, with glasses. So thank you very much for coming and staying for the entire meeting. I will say that a lot of other groups who come, they come- I will say that a lot of other groups who come, they come for just their part and leave, so we really appreciate you sitting through the entire meeting. I also just wanted to remember, remind folks that primary election season is going on right now. You've seen all the signs out there, so just do your duty as a citizen of the United States and get out there and vote in the primaries. I believe that's March 19th is the final day for that. So that's all I've got.
Thank you. And just to add on to what Vice Mayor Byington said, the city has a property tax replacement levy on the ballot, and whether, whether you want a Democratic primary, a Republican primary, or just an independent, that issue will be on all, all three ballots, and we would encourage you to support that. We originally had a 3.75 mil levy that expired. This replacement levy is only 2.41 mils. And as you know, or should know, because for 15 years, I've been telling you, only eight cents of every dollar you pay for property taxes go to Oakwood. It's currently down to 5.6 cents, 5.6% of every dollar. So for, you, you saw the large number of projects that we have, and these are the types of things that our, our property taxes, as well as income taxes, go to support to keep our community, the finest community in the Miami Valley. Our next regular scheduled meeting is for Monday, April 1st, and I think it would be appropriate, you know, since we're having our meeting on April Fool's Day, we need to, don't throw these glasses away. We'll bring those to the council meeting for the April Fool's.
Don't throw them away, 'cause it'll be April 8th. It's, it's after, so.
Well, that's a good point. You know, if I knew what the agenda was talking about, yeah.
If you throw them away before then, you're in real trouble.
So in that, in that case, I will, I will re-say the word of the day for the students here is "appurtenances." So make sure you learn what that word means. Thank you all for coming. We are adjourned.